The panel select board meeting to order on Thursday, February 8th, 2018, 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval first, public comment, approve of the minutes for 123, 125, 201, and 205. Warrants, mail, administrative assistant report, attorney interview. And that's what I have. Motion approved, agenda?
So moved.
Need a second. Okay. Anything to be added? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any public comments tonight?
I have a comment regarding the Friends of Pownell.
Okay.
And actually, a request.
All right. You're up.
Oh, already. Okay. I'll read the letter of request, and then I'll answer questions that the people have it. I'm not sure if everybody on the board knows what the Friends of Pownell is. It's a...
No, why?
An organization that was started as a result of the last Vermont Rural Development Initiative. After that, there were some funds that were available for the town. The town had it in their, as a line item in their budget for a while, and then this organization was created, and the funds were moved to that. And the purpose of the organization is to mostly assist in education, community building, that kind of thing. So, we've done various things in the past. For a few years, we were pretty active in every town meeting. You know, I'd get up and say what we had done. We've given video cameras, digital cameras in the classrooms, so students can show their work to the whole class, and then they can comment on it. We funded, like, the food for this last Vermont Rural Development. We did some work when Irene hit, getting some dehumidifiers for families and stuff like that.
How many members do you have, Rose?
It's just a board of directors.
Oh.
So, we have a, it's a four-board, four members. It's myself, Ruth Botso, Jim Winchester, and Jim Butten.
Yeah.
Actually, it was started with Peter Hopkins.
Okay, so it's him or Peter?
Yeah. Peter was the first, first person in charge. And in the past, well, the letter will explain it. So, in the past, the Friends of Pownell have hosted events to give candidates for town office an opportunity to address citizens. These events have been held at the Pownell Elementary School. The school, at their library. The school library is available on February 27th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM for a meet and greet with the current candidates. However, the Southwest Supervisor Reunion requires that organizations using the facility have proof of insurance. The Friends of Pownell is not an insured organization. In the past, the Select Board has voted to cover these candidate meetings using the town's insurance. So, we are requesting that the Select Board provide the proof of insurance needed by the Southwest Supervisor Reunion for this meet and greet event.
Linda, the, the school has that now?
I just reserved the gym for the town meeting. They currently have a new COI.
Okay. What is the COI?
Certificate of Insurance.
Okay. And so, I guess what they need to know is since we're not actually...
Well, now, you, I wanted to make sure...
We need to fill out a facility use for you.
Oh, okay. So...
If the board's in agreement.
Yeah, okay. So, you're talking about this form?
Yeah.
Okay, so you fill it out instead of us?
It's okay for you to fill it out. We'll give you the certificate.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Get a motion to the board to approve the use of the school by this group?
So moved. Need a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 So, the 27th, at what time?
It's the 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And given the number of candidates, and, and also, we thought it would be more informal, the format will be that each candidate, whether they're, it's a contested position or if they're just running for an office, will have three minutes to sort of present a prepared statement to the group that has gathered. And then, after that, the second hour will be, the Friends of Pownell will provide some snacks, and it'll be a chance for people to just mill around and talk. And we figured that would be a way for people to, to get their own questions answered, to get a sense of who the candidates are. And, and there'll be a table, so the candidates, if they have literature, can bring it there. And they can also have contact information. So, if somebody meets them there and says, "What can I do to help?", they have a way of contacting them.
I think it's a great idea. At other town meetings, people have stood up and said, "Who's running? I don't even know who's running."
Right, yeah.
So, I'd encourage people to go.
So, you would notify the people that are...
I will ask Julie now.
Okay.
For a list of all the candidates, and we'll invite them to come, and we'll give them the format. And we'll provide an opportunity, if a candidate can't make it, because, you know, it's one specific evening, and they might not, that they can, they can submit a three-minute statement that would be read by the moderator.
You should be able to get a list of the candidates off our website, too.
I, I know who the candidates are, but their contact information is...
Oh, okay.
So, I can send them a letter.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, no. I know some people have.
Any other public comment from anybody?
I just have a question, or maybe a couple of questions. Where is the board at this point on the proposed new town plan?
At this point, I can tell you, we as a board decided to discontinue the town committee and give it a year's rest, only because of the vote that was done in March. We started with...
Town plan.
Oh, town plan?
Town plan.
I thought you talked about town hall. Town plan, it's in our hands, I think, at this point.
Town plan is, uh, pretty much been drafted. They've had some hearings. We're supposed to have a couple of hearings. The planning board had some hearings. Now, we're supposed to have a couple of hearings. They're revamping the energy section, 'cause that, the state wanted that redone, or something about that that wasn't clear. So, we're working on that.
Has the board passed it back to them? As long as they're reworking the energy plan?
Once. Wow. They, they presented it to, they, they've sent it to the Select Board. Now, the Select Board has some hearings. Now, it does, and we either okay it, say, "Yeah, that's okay, we're gonna go with it", or we suggest some changes. We don't make changes. We send it back to them. That's the way I understand it, if there needs to be a change.
Make a recommendation.
Preliminary town plan is pretty much crafted. I was at a planning meeting Tuesday, and that was, uh, we were working on the energy thing, siting and stuff like that. That's what the state is involved with, where they want to put this stuff. And, uh, so, we're still working on that. That's a revamp, but the, that's the only revamp there is. The rest of the thing, they, they okayed it, and supposedly, if we okay it, then Berkshire, not Berkshire...
BCRC.
BCRC has to okay it, to see if it fits the...
So, they're going through the stage of getting their public comment. They pass it to you.
And we ask for public comment when we have our hearings.
Right. But now they're revamping something.
Just the energy part.
Well, that's, that's a pretty important...
That is, that's right. But that's what they're doing. That's right. A lot of people are concerned about that.
So, it's like, how, you know, they, they have signed off on what they've done, and now they're reworking something? I mean, it's like...
That's what was brought up, uh, Tuesday night.
Yeah.
They had maps showing the spots at the state, uh, well, not the state even, the energy people. These spots would be, uh, you could get more power, talking solar. Wind is pretty much out, 'cause we're not high enough.
Which is good, right.
The mountains ain't very high enough for the...
They're pretty low.
Huh?
Well, but they're in, but they're in New York City.
I mean, that's...
Yeah, they're in New York.
I'm, I'm just saying what was said. I'm not talking about beauty or anything else. But, uh, it's not feasible, they said, wind. So, we're not, they're not talking about that, but they are talking about, they're trying to figure out a master plan, which everybody out there can listen to that, to see, you know, 'cause, should I put it on, should, if you want it on your property, should you get it? Or somebody down the street wants it on his property, should he get it? That's the problem, that's the biggest problem. Siting is, there's quite a few spots in the town of Pownell that are fit for solar. And personally, my main objection is, Pownell shouldn't be carrying the whole state. We got a lot more than a lot of other counties. So, until they catch up, I think, you know, we should, we shouldn't worry about it. And we should figure out a fair and equitable way, 'cause if a person has a piece of land, it's his land.
Sure.
You know, he should be able to do what he wants. But that's, that's my opinion. But that's what they're talking about now. They're trying to figure out a, kind of a fair and equitable way to do that.
I'm just questioning the process now, 'cause like, they, they've signed off, finished product, handed it to you. On their, their work was done, they signed off on it.
Yeah, we have a timetable.
Handed it to you, and now they're editing it.
And we have 30 days or something to do it and give it back.
And as part, as part of my report tonight, I was going to, I was looking to schedule your first public hearing for the town plan. Your first 30-day review expires on the 17th. You had 30 days at least before you could...
Shouldn't that occurred, like, after they finished their edits to that energy?
Well, we can, I think we should go with our public hearing if we have it handed to us.
But it's incomplete information.
But at that hearing, we might discuss just what you're discussing, and sort of table this a little bit, whether we wait for the energy, or we can move on what is there, and isolate the energy from it, as approved, not approved, but the rest. It's all what the board will decide at that time, but we'll have a hearing. I knew there was a timetable.
Do we just have to be complete within 120 days?
And I think Nelson is right, and I encourage anybody out there that has any interest in this at Pownell, it is their town plan, they should show up. And if they don't feel that we should be acting on something that isn't totally complete, which it isn't, they are, you know, but the state supposedly, that's what they said at the meeting the other night, the state supposedly made them revamp this. We had a energy, uh, thing in there, but they wanted it revamped.
And it could be a lot worse than what we already have.
Maybe, I don't know. I don't know. I didn't read both sides of that. I know what we had in there.
The, the key is, is the people that want to address this should go to our website. The plan is up there. Take a look at it, get ready to make comments, and certainly attend our public hearings, and provide us with information so that we know where the town would like to go with this. Uh, in the past, there's been hearings, I'm not sure how many people showed up at the hearing for the planning board, but usually, very few people come to these things.
There, there was an exchange of ideas going back and forth, and continuations, and there was a, a meeting, the last one that was scheduled was canceled due to weather, and it was supposed to be a re-schedule, and nobody heard about it.
And then all of a sudden it came...
We were together, and we were giddy, 'cause nobody was there, and they just, it was an opportunity, and they, bam, they stamped it, signed it, and it was gone.
Well...
Came to you.
Well, the key is to come to us if you have any concerns or comments on the plan.
I don't think it's your first time you've heard that. They, they, they kind of like fast-forwarded the process.
But let's, uh, again, we have the ability to request changes. I'm not sure if there's not some minor changes we're able to make, but we can't make major changes, that has to go back. And it actually has to be recorded with the clerk, if I'm correct, if I remember part of that process. Been so long since I've done one of those. But basically, there's, there's a process we have to go through, and in that process, people need to come in and view their concerns. This board then, at that point, can make their decision whether to approve this plan or not approve this plan, 'cause it has that ability. It can go to the voters, you can petition, and the voters will vote and decide the plan. There's lots of ways this could go. This is just the beginning stages with the Select Board. And I know it took the planning board, what, five years?
Yes, a long time. And now, they're in a hurry to try to, try to process this thing out. But I'm, uh, as a citizen, I'm encouraging everybody, well, any, and it is your, and it's your town, so whatever you feel is necessary, you should bring it up at that, at that hearing, and make sure that that's recorded. Supposedly, they said, I, I didn't attend the planning board meeting, I was out of town when they had the hearing. And they said they had 30-some people or something, the first one.
Right.
And, uh, they said, "Well, there was, there was some things that were brought up, and we talked about them afterwards." And they said, "Well, can we do this? Can we do that?" And they made some changes there. I don't know how, how big a changes they were. I wasn't at that meeting, so I can't really speak on how that meeting worked out.
People felt that the back-and-forth process that they're using was accomplishing something.
Right.
Until, all of a sudden, fast-forward, sealed, delivered. And, so, people were left feeling, it's like, okay, all that work, and all that energy we put in, all that good faith that we put in, trust aside at first offer.
And I think what Ron is saying is that those things were taken into account, and pieces of the plan were reworked.
They did talk about, they did have these, these things that were brought up, and they didn't talk about them. Now, as far as that second meeting, I don't know what happened there either. I mean, I've been in and out of hospitals, like, you know, pretty regularly here, so like, meetings ain't been that great. But, uh, that's, that's what they said. And I know that they want to get this thing done, because it's gotta be done this year sometime anyway. End it by the end of the year, I guess. But also, they're not gonna, as far as I'm concerned, I don't, I don't think they're gonna wash it by this board without some, us looking at it. And I encourage everybody out there, because some people, if they, you know, if they got a piece of land, or they, and they want it, they want that energy thing, that's where that's important, because it could involve a lease, it could involve something else. And, and it is your property. And I'm all for people being able to decide what they want to do.
Well, I would say that if 30 people made it to that meeting, and they didn't feel like they'd got their message across, and that board didn't listen or hear it, come to the Select Board. We'll accommodate 30 people, just like the planning board did, and we'll listen to each one of them, 'cause we have to do that same thing. We're, we're going through those hearing processes. So, that, don't think because you felt you didn't get something somewhere, that it's over. Our hearings are still coming up.
I'm just, I'm just like, you know, I'm just speaking that one, I want to be known that there's people that are still very concerned. And, and it's a lot of it's about process and communication, and it's a hard thing to do, it's a small town. Everybody's busy. We're all, we all got jobs, we're all doing things, multiple things, so...
That's why I reiterate, people...
You can't say...
It's, it's on the web. If you've got a computer, bring it up, look at it, read it in detail, because it is, there's quite a bit there to read.
People should know there's one standard place that they can trust to go to for this information, and it's still, nobody knows where to go. It's like, it was posted at Village Market, it was posted at Winchester, it's just like, that doesn't work.
Yeah, and there's one here.
For most of us.
For the meeting, you mean?
For, for, for various things. Any kind of communication, it's like, where is this communication being disseminated?
Our webpage, now that it's up, also puts when the meetings are being held. It also puts the minutes.
And it's handy, I can...
Yeah, the webpage has helped a lot. But it has to be posted in two public places, so Linda has to put it in two public places, and that's why it's Winchester's and the, and the store.
Yeah, those are our standard posting places.
Winchester's and Village Market?
And the third one is the town office.
The, the Dallas General, do they have a board there?
They, it's not, it's not our posting place.
And I, I've approached them about other things, and they, you know, in terms of town, political town things, they, yeah.
Yeah. Well, again, I want to thank you for coming, because it is an important issue. And basically, I hope people, as Ronnie said, reads this, because it's, uh, has a lot to it. I remember reading through it and making a few comments myself, and sending it out to the planning board. I was told most of those were done, but I haven't had a chance to reread it yet.
See, a lot of people are looking at it, and a lot of people are talking about it, and people are concerned. And it's not just a few handful that you hear from, the concern is a lot of people concerned.
Well, have them make their notes and come to our hearing.
It's good that people are looking at it.
And if it's, if it's gonna be that large, then we'll need to get a place to hold our hearing, where people can come and sit down.
I assume it's not gonna, this, this is gonna accommodate?
No, it probably won't, and, but everybody, the worst thing that could happen is, once this thing is passed and settled in, is people saying, "Who passed that law?"
Right.
The people should know what's going on.
Yep.
And investigate, and all this. Maybe they'll have to spend, come up to a meeting, and whatever, spend some time.
Show up on election day and just start making checkmarks.
But they do have printed copies of that, too. I don't know where all of them are. I mean, I have one, 'cause I'm on the board, but...
It's a lot of paper.
It is, a lot to read. And a lot of people like to read it electronically.
Put it on a phone drive, and print it up on a staple, that cost probably $40 bucks.
Nelson, he's one of them guys, he won't, he wouldn't pick that book up, he reads it electronically, which is fine.
You can, you can copy it out to a Word file, you can then edit it, do what you want to do, highlight the section.
Make the print bigger.
You know, do what you want to do, and then, when you're here, you talk about it, it's right in front of you.
Yep.
Okay? Thank you. Again, anything else? Any public comments anywhere else? No?
I became aware of another issue that people are wondering about, concerned about, and, um, I guess a lot of, a lot of materials going in, going into the old gravel bed where the solar places, and a lot, a lot of trucks are going across that, running back and forth, a lot of them, and of course, every day, big trucks, not just small dump trucks.
Yeah, our road foreman has looked into that, and I've talked to him about it. Basically, part of that gravel bed is still active, so what they're doing is taking gravel back and forth from there. I don't know if they're doing mixing or what, but the bottom line was, it was never totally shut down, so they had the right to do this. Our concern has been the bridge, overweight trucks, and our road foreman is looking into that, and, uh, we also just got a bunch of permits to the town for them to actually drive on the town roads that we've approved.
There's a safety concern that I have, and I had, just to be general about that road, especially when they're putting in the solar panels. Um, there's a lot of parking on the road, it's on a corner, and there's road, then there's the river, and there's nothing...
There's no parking going there now?
No.
No, okay.
But it was like, I saw those, I saw a school bus squeeze along the riverbank with kids on it, and it's like, now it's just a mud slick, and they, they're sweeping it, but it's a mud slick, it's slippery, and again, it's the road, then it's the river. And there's nothing to stop you. If you go over that bank, you're going in the river. And when it's high, you're gonna go over the dam, you're gonna go to, you're gonna go to the Hudson, you know, and then to the ocean. You'll be dead by then.
Okay.
Guardrails.
They do, they did...
The only road I know of that...
Get them to sweep the thing, I guess, twice a day or something.
Yeah.
Because Max Ryan has a sweeper over there.
I'm talking guardrails, it's like, to stop a car from going in that river.
Yeah, we'd have to ask Joel a little bit about what that is, and what it means to do it there, 'cause if the road is narrow enough, we want to make sure you got something guardrails can bite in, or otherwise, they're gonna just tip over anyways.
Yeah.
So, we have to look at it, see. But we can ask Joel that question.
The old type of, you know, the old cable, hook it on the axle or something, give it somebody a fighting chance, anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
Not places you can't use them anymore, the old cable.
No, they want steel, and they want them buried on the ends, and everything, there's a lot of restrictions on...
Well, there's a lot of...
Guardrails, no.
Well, yeah, because there's a safety issues, they have to, they have to do all kinds of... Anything else?
I am pressed.
Okay. No one else? Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for coming in. Yep. Planning, uh, the town plan is a very important item. Okay. Approve of the minutes, 12318.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on them? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Um...
Ron, what's out there?
Ron was out.
I was out, and now I look at him, I must not have that set.
February 23rd.
Tuesday, the 23rd?
So, Ron, Ron abstains.
January 23rd, I abstained.
Yeah.
So, they, make it, somebody has to make the...
I'll do the second.
It's all set, we, we're fine. He just abstained, the rest of us said aye. Hey, January 25th.
Move to approve it.
Second. Okay, any discussion on that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. February 1st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Monday, February 5th.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Minutes.
You have.
Warrants. Hey. Payroll ending 2/9/18, an amount of $7,794.92. What's this? Counts payable, $4,069.52. What's your pleasure, guys?
Motion approved.
Got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mail. Okay, our delinquent tax collector sent us a note that she's informing us that she has put together a list of 36 parcels to go to the attorney. He will send the 30-day letters, request the payment before tax sales proceed to start. She will keep us informed. Okay, we have, uh, from our Lister, a note that basically talks about she's met with Chuck. He's given her access to the computers. He is going to recommend a laptop for her by the looks, that Chuck sets up, that is secure. This would help him on other things with emails that the Lister's office gets during the day. She is planning to work Mondays and Wednesdays, 4:30 to 7:30 PM, and Saturday, 8:00 to 1:00 PM. And, uh, she will also try to come in Friday afternoons for a bit, but that is up in the air right now.
I think it should be noted that she's, that she's, um, this is our interim, um, Lister, right?
Yeah, this, this is the person we've appointed to fill in until the March election.
And Chuck Watson's our IT guy.
And Chuck's our IT guy. Also talks about a week of February 19th, off a regular job, and going to work with Barb Wednesday that week to do training. So, she's doing some training, she's already did a bit of training with Nimerick, and she's gonna sign up for the new lister training on March 27th, 28th, which I assume the board will approve her to go to those trainings, because we asked that question for people to tell us. Nobody has objections to that.
I don't know.
Okay. So she's stepped right in and it sounds like she's moving forward. Okay, Vermont Agency of Transportation Department of Motor Vehicle Uniform Municipal Access Weight Permit. This is for Belco. The standard stuff is put on here, Joe has signed it. What's your pleasure?
Motion to sign.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this is from the Agency of Transportation. Uh, please forward this letter to appropriate road maintenance person in your municipality as it contains information pertaining to centerline pavement markings on Class 1 and Class 2 highways. The painting season runs from April 1st to April 31st, so please try to plan accordingly. Uh, be advised that centerlines on Class 1 and Class 2 highways are the only markets V Trans will be paying this year. This may represent a change from previous praxis. Those are the key highlights on this. It's basically letting us know that they're coming to do centerlines. Okay. Got a certificate of highway mileage. This is to do with our discontinued road.
This is our yearly certificate.
Okay. And you've basically shown on here the roads we discontinued. Okay, so the total, it shows on here 76.446, which is saying subtract 0.30 from Class 3?
Yes. V Trans will take care of that.
Yep.
That mileage is also on cruise to two state highways, though.
Yep. Class 1.
Yeah, Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 there. Thirty-two miles of Class 3, I don't know, 12 miles of Class 2. That's really what we maintain.
Yeah, with 51 of Class 3 and 11 of Class 2, uh, state highway is 12, so...
Yeah, that's 7 to 246.
Yep. What's your pleasure, guys? You want me to sign this? Or we all get a chance to sign it by looks?
Oh, that's good.
Motion to sign.
That's good for me, I like to have you all signing.
So we're down 0.30.
You want writer's credit?
Got a motion, I got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I missed my second.
Who did? I made the motion.
I did the second, or some, I'll do it.
It's good, you all can, uh, sign that and go with me. Now we got new signs for Town Highway 3 from V Trans. Attached will be a signature issue finance and maintenance agreement for the Town of Pownau. Please return the signature page, copy of the current compliance certificate of insurance. This is finance and maintenance agreement between the State of Vermont and the Town of Pownau for statewide STP HRRR 24, contract number FMO 284. I'm gonna see if I can... There, okay, whereas the state proposes to submit to the Federal Highway Administration United States Department of Transportation, a federal aid project known as State Highway SDP HRRR 24, the project, which will provide certain improvements to South Stream Road in the Town of Pownau. In the Town of Pownau, Vermont, as shown on the plans for this project, which have been provided to the municipality and describes as follow. South Stream Road beginning at MP 0, at the pavement joint at the intersection of US 7, and extending norally to MP 5.240, 27,667 feet to the Bennington Town Line. Work to be performed under this project consists of the replacement and installation of new traffic signs. Goes on with the standard municipal contract, where it defaults and so forth. And if you wish to have that done, guys, you need me to sign it, so...
Did it, excuse me, did it say South Stream Road beginning at Route 7?
Yeah.
South Stream Road and Barbara Pond Road have the same highway number TH3. Oh, okay.
It starts here and goes over all the way to Bennington.
Okay.
All the way to Bennington. What's your pleasure, guys? You want me to sign this?
Yeah, sign it. Make a motion and you sign it. How's that?
Second.
Okay. This one I go myself, guys, okay? All those in favor say aye.
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 That's our nail. We get the administrative assistance report.
This Friday, the treasurer and I worked with the external auditors on the year-end 6/30/17 financial audit. Chuck Watson took care of some items on Tuesday for the telephone system, and he was working with the newly appointed lister. Chuck will be here Friday to assist with the new copier setup. The notice of demolition was filed. Tentative demolition of the small vacant outbuilding is scheduled to be done by the Highway Department at the end of the month. I've assembled all the docs needed for the 2018 certificate of highway mileage, which reflects the .25 mile for the two discontinued roads the board did in December, and it also, um, reflects the realignment of Montgomery Road from previous years.
Good.
Um, the facility use request was submitted to Pownau School for the annual town meeting. Next meeting, the transfer station supervisor is scheduled. It's also Local Government Day. Anybody that wants to attend still needs to, um, let me know. Uh, the Sheriff's Department has provided their input on the proposed large gathering ordinance. I will former, forward the comments to you and we can revisit possibly next week or soon afterwards. There were quite a few comments.
Okay, good.
Uh, there'll be a treatment plant meeting on the 22nd at 6:00 PM. We're gonna be working on the budget. The budget then will be approved in March. And as I stated, um, earlier, I'm going to be looking into scheduling your first public hearing for the town plan. Your 30-day review expires on the 17th.
17th of February?
You had 30 days before you could hold your first public hearing.
Oh, so it didn't have to be done within the 30 days?
You're in your review process. Um, other than that, been trying to play catch-up, as you can see, we had a lot of minutes to catch up on now that we're all done with the budget and the town morning and all of that good stuff. And that's all I have for a report. Any questions?
Uh, question, um, the municipal permit with the Sheriff's Department for, um, ordinance speed, motor vehicle ordinance, we're working on that.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we with that?
Um, currently, Chad is reviewing that as well.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Gonna meet and greet, uh, and talk to Attorney Fisher, that's the next thing on the item, the agenda. Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm Bob Fisher, and I'll answer any questions that you have, but I can tell you a little bit about myself and then a little bit about, uh, what I do as a municipal attorney as well. It's helpful, I think, to get a sense of who somebody is, as well as what they do for their, their work. So I essentially live on the same property I grew up on, except across the stone wall where my wife and I built a, a house, but have been in Wilmington, uh, my entire life. Uh, I think you mentioned going to Maine every day? That's where I went to law school, so my third year of law school, I commuted back and forth because my wife worked here, and that's a long drive back.
It is.
But, uh, went to University of Maine Law School, uh, actually went to Williams College down the road here for undergrad. Uh, and then was a deputy state's attorney, uh, for about 10 years before joining my father in what is Fisher &amp; Fisher, uh, and have been essentially a general practitioner, uh, for now 20, 25 years since I've been, uh, admitted, maybe a little bit more. Um, but our primary concentrations are municipal law and then residential real estate. So I have one office in Brattonboro, one office in Dover, and, uh, the Dover office tends to do a lot of the Mount Snow ski area, you know, second home stuff. But the Brattonboro office, we represent, I was just making the list, uh, we represent the town of Brattonboro, that's probably the biggest town, uh, but we represent a lot of small towns as well. Wyndham, Dummerston, Stratton, Whitingham, Halifax, Lunandary, Reedsboro. Used to represent Wilmington for many, many years, uh, but, uh, two things happened. One, uh, I represent a ski area that had a conflict with Wilmington, and two, my wife is, uh, on the select board. So I thought that was a bit of a conflict, and, and so we, we very pleasantly resigned from being their town attorney, though I'm fairly still involved. I'm also the town moderator in Wilmington, so I like municipal law, municipal government, it's a lot of fun. Small towns are what the world is to me made of, and, uh, you wanna do your job, do it well, efficiently, doesn't need to be fancier than it is, um, and, uh, always do it with respect to all the citizens. So from a overall theme and standpoint, I've been doing municipal law for 25 years. It's, and it sounds corny, but it's an honor to represent towns and municipalities, because in my view, local government is a heck of a lot better than what they're doing down in Washington sometimes, so, uh, it's just more tangible. So we have, uh, in my office, I have two other attorneys, uh, and, uh, about three or four staff members, some that are paralegals and some that are secretaries. Um, so if you have any, oh, I, I suppose as far as work, you know, the municipal, you, you see it as a select board. Municipal issues can be everything from human resource personnel matters to contract matters, to you have a gravel, uh, contract, to, uh, town plans, energy, solar panels. Wilmington and Searsburg had the, the wind issues. Uh, you mentioned tax sales, we've done many, many tax sales. Kevin O'Toole does a lot of the tax sales on this side of the mountain, and then, uh, I do a lot on the east side of the mountain. And we pretty much agree on everything except one, when we've been at seminars, when you have a tax sale and somebody pays, and they pay, it bids up over the amount that's due to the town. He returns that immediately to the taxpayer. And many of the towns on the east side of the state actually retain that and apply that toward the redemption, uh, for that one-year redemption. But, uh, worked with him a lot, he's the super guy. And, uh, in any event, uh, that's a little bit about, about me.
How much of your time, when you talk about municipals and real estate, how much of your time do you put into municipal type, uh, legal issues versus the, the real estate of you?
I would say it's, uh, 55 to 60% probably, in there. I mean, when I, when I think of my typical week, uh, Brattonboro being a bigger town takes a lot of time. Uh, the smaller towns, some are, are quite consistent with issues, or they, or they like to help, have me help them along. Other towns, it may be, there's one hot issue a year, uh, and it may be very, very, very quiet, and then, boy, something just boils over and they need me. Um, of course, this time of year, I have sympathy for Linda with all of the warnings and the budget work. Getting ready for town meeting tends to be quite busy, so I would say December, January, February, and 1st of March is, uh, probably much higher than that from a municipal standpoint.
Okay. Anybody else have a question?
Yeah, um, I wondered about, we're, we're about to hire a town administrator, and I wondered about employment law, how much you know about employment law and writing contracts?
Yep, I've done lots of that, uh, and of course, you've made your decision between town administrator versus going to a town manager's.
Right, well, we'd have to have a charter, right.
But as far as employment law, I, I, I wanna say unfortunately, I do a lot of that, but a lot of that is actually on the, uh, termination side, and we deal sometimes in the larger towns with, and I also represent a couple, uh, uh, school districts, too. But with the larger towns and school districts, you're dealing with, uh, union contracts and grievances, and the termination side can be far more complex. That's why doing good contracts in the beginning make very good sense, and, uh...
So we could come to you and have you write a contract for us?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. Other questions?
I don't have any.
Bruce? Ronnie?
No, he sounds overly qualified to me.
Overly qualified?
I don't wanna be overly qualified. You know, I read a good, I read a great book, this is just an aside, I don't wanna take a, but it was this guy, he had gone to like Middlebury College and I think Yale Graduate School, and he and his wife moved to this tiny town in Alaska. And at first, you, Alaska had the big oil boom, so everybody worked for oil, and when that dried up, everybody was scurrying for jobs. And so he was in for an interview at the local hardware store, and he, he went through all of his credentials, and so the guy said, "Okay, what can you actually do?" And we saw that was a good part of that book.
Yes.
And, uh, along those lines, built our house, built our barn burn this summer, so we had to rebuild the barn. Um, but I'm not good with cars, don't know anything about engines.
So if we didn't have Kevin to do tax sales, we could count on you to do, help us with tax sales, too?
And, and there are some towns, for instance, uh, Lunandary has me do a lot of their general stuff, but I think the tax collector there has Kevin do their tax sales. So it's not, I never look at something as an all or nothing, and the League of Cities and Towns, uh, has so many services which you should take advantage of, and I hope you do, uh, as far as, many times you, like, for instance, there's with personnel matters, they have a program where you can talk to Brian Monahan at his office to get three hours worth of advice, and many times, those three hours are really crucial.
I talked to Jill Muir up there in H&R.
And many of us municipal attorneys know one another, and we bounce ideas off one another. It's all, get the job done correctly, so it's...
Abby Friedman is helping us with our, with our town administrator on, and writing the ad and the job description.
Yeah, that's great.
We've been working with her on it.
They do a super job, not only with town administrators, but with the town manager searches, and, and for that matter, any larger personnel searches.
Yeah, and they're very nice to deal with, too.
Oh, yeah. And they do a lot of your work as far as gathering all of that information, it's quite nice.
Okay. Anything else?
I do, oh, I'd like to say thank you for allowing Joel and I to work with you through the email on the gravel contract language, it was, it was a good experience to do it that day.
Yep, I learned, uh, a few things, 'cause I had a question on the gravel contract about the, how you were measuring, uh, taking things out, and Joel called me and explained the survey in place was better than doing it by the loose gravel, because as you crush it, of course, it expands, and that made perfect sense to me. We had another town that was shared a gravel pit, which actually was a little bit similar to your situation, but they were each taking gravel out per day, and so they had to stop at a, a shed and, and have somebody mark down, so they did it the other way, so that was, it was, you learned something, it's great.
Okay. Well, we had a fellow work for us for a while, and he'd worked construction his whole life, he's turned us on to that method. Max Manion is a big contractor down in Massachusetts. And that day, it's all done survey off of satellites, it's in place, it's an accurate thing rather than off the tailgate.
Yeah, yeah, that makes perfect sense.
I mean, we, we actually, uh, took advantage of ourselves on, uh, covering the landfill up here. We bought clay, but we bought it off the tailgate. If we had bought it that way, we'd have saved a lot of money.
Yep.
And I'm sure the guy would have sold it to us either way, because clay doesn't have a lot of value.
Yeah, that's true, that's very true.
Unless you gotta have it for cover of landfill.
That's right.
Now I guess that's more diehard.
Well, uh, here's, here's where I'm at, guys. Do you wanna go in executive session tonight and make a decision whether to hire or not hire, or do you wanna do it out in the open? Have you heard enough? Your call.
I'll do it right out here.
Are you ready? Make a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready. I make a motion, I hired a man.
I'll suck at it.
We got like five seconds. When can you start?
So I can start right now, but in, to the extent you wanna discuss it without me in the room, I'm happy to leave, too.
No, I think we're okay.
We had some time to do some research.
We researched you, we know all of that.
Yeah.
More things than you probably know we know.
Yeah.
You're highly recommended.
Only kidding about that.
Yeah.
You'll lay over money, though, if you can't make it back up the mountain.
But we're calling O'Toole tomorrow.
When Ronnie speaks sweet words to you one of these days, just remember what he...
Right, right.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Good, thank you, welcome aboard.
Well, thank you very much, happy to be aboard.
Okay. Anything else before us tonight, guys?
Make a motion adjourned.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.